Uh, brand new Lamborghini F a cop car with a on my hip cuz I'm a cop. Wait, I said that wrong.
At least it wasn't around.
Start over. I'm gonna start over. Alright, alright. Got a brand new Lamborghini F a cop car with a pistol on my hip like I'm a cop. Ay, ay, ay. If you ever sell, God. That was the worst.
That was probably one of your worst intros by far. We should just stop the solo Yak song, solo Yak.
I have a five hundred dollar prop to make a noise and still. Oh, boy. Oh, boy. Alright, what's up? Tommy V, Buzz, Cute Bug, Berry Frost, Angel K, Jeff Ross, Ryan Maples, Dee's Nuts nineteen sixty-five. Those are some old salty nuts, bro.
Hey, man, just be careful. As long as they're Dee's nuts, not Dee's acorns. As long as it's not Dee acorns, then we're good.
If my nuts were acorns, I would teabag a Tahoe. Alright, everybody. See Jason Flubbing Fitzcam, what's up? Against all enemies. What does that say? Foreign and domestic. That's a good username. William Gassor. Christian Stromblad, K Stevenson, Neil Crumout, what's up? Booker Dooley, what's up? Connecticut Patriot Press, what is up? Cubano in Texas, what is up? Alright, here we go. Uh, the Armed Fisherman is with me. In case you can't see, his first channel was called Solo Yakker because he goes solo on a kayak solo yakker. That channel got demonetized cuz there's lots of haters out there who hate freedom and freedom of speech. Started a new channel, The Armed Fisherman. It's going just as good and strong as Solo Yakker channel. But you should still watch the Solo Yakker channel. The greatest second amendment audits are on that channel.
Yeah, there's some, I, I, I went back in my, my history. I went to Solo Yakker. There was videos that probably most of you, if you've been on The Armed Fisherman, you probably have never seen. If you're new to the channel, you've probably never seen, and I've been slowly uploading a couple of those here and there, just to throw it back out in the wind and say, hey, look, this is what I used to go through.
Yes, so. If you're unaware of who this gentleman is, you're missing out. He exposed the whole, uh, state of Florida's police infrastructure that they have no clue that you can carry, open carry in Florida while you're going to and from hunting, fishing, camping. It's just another one of the many laws that gives us right that the police refuse not only to read and learn, but to understand and protect. So, that gets us to where we're at now. We, uh, he went to Clearwater Beach. Clearwater Beach is super tourist area. Voted one of the best beaches in America one year, uh, blah, blah, blah. People go there. It's expensive. It's hard to get down there. The parking's expensive. It's tourist, tourist, tourist. Now, throw in an American patriot, open carrying an AR fifteen down Clearwater Beach on his way to the fishing pier to go fishing. Perfectly law-abiding citizen. Some, some female cop. Was she a detective?
Uh, yeah, I, we call, I refer to her as Lieutenant, uh, May, uh, McNasty.
Okay, so Lieutenant McNasty walks up to him on the beach and just grabs him. So, the cops think that a guy walking down the beach with a gun, which is perfectly legal in Florida, as long as you're going to and from hunting, fishing, or camping, they think that's dangerous. So they think the best thing to do is have a female cop go up there and make physical contact with them.
And, oh, just one second.
Yeah.
Everybody that's watching right now, what John is doing right now is setting up. He's giving you the context of everything. This is, this is how I was introduced to Clearwater. And then, obviously, you're gonna see more, but just, just so everyone knows, this is the context of how I got introduced to Clearwater.
So, then they disarm him, then they put him in the back of their squad car for how long?
Uh, it was forty minutes, and I had a, I had a concealed firearm on me in the back of their vehicle.
Yeah, so they didn't even frisk him to make sure he didn't have any other weapons. Super safe police force here. So he's in the back.
Rifle at, and they point, when they stuck it on the hood of the car, it was pointed directly at me, and I'm just like, oh, fuck me. Sorry.
One of my friends, yeah. One of my friends was a cop, and he said he was at the range, like, re-certifying. He said the cop next to him didn't understand that you eject the magazine, put it down, and unload one bullet. Like, he was literally racking each bullet to eject it.
That's, I've heard that one too, man.
Anyway, they disarm him. They don't frisk him. They put him in the back of their car in the, in the hot sun in the summer. Forty minutes trapped in a steel box, basically, and he's small. I don't know, I don't even think I could have fit in that car. And he's got a gun on him, and he has the ability to take out his phone calls lawyer. Finally, after forty minutes of the morons, five, six, seven, eight of them, cops planning and finally learning that what he's doing is perfectly illegal, they decide to let him go while they surround him, and then he goes off on him. Fine. Okay, there's that incident. He goes to the Clearwater City Council to redress his grievances because they falsely imprisoned him, uh, basically assaulted him, put their hands on him. They did every, falsely imprisoned. I don't know how many, how many felonies they committed against you that day. So he goes to the city council. Right, so he goes to the city council meeting to redress his grievances about this. And when his time was up, he went a little over, and as he's walking out, the police chief, or he's the police chief now, but he was just about to be police chief then, comes up and assaults Solo Yakker right in the city council chambers.
Again.
So since then, that was three, four years ago? Two, three?
Three years ago.
You've been going to every meeting, and since they ignore him, he's just saying, alright, you're gonna ignore me? I'll just keep coming. Keep coming.
They did, that, that happened, the, the two incidences, they were within a few months. And then I left it alone for a year. And then, one of my first whistleblowers reached out to me and was like, hey, check out this guy. And, uh, he gave me a YouTube chat, or the Clearwater meeting, and it was Mr. Haluba that you know. And I was just like, I watched it, go to the timestamp, and I'm like, and I'm seeing what they're doing to him, and I'm seeing what they're doing. They keep doing it. Like, he sent me like three or four videos, and I just, I saw this repetitiveness. And I was like, man, this guy needs some help. You know, like, he's, he, the one great thing about having a channel like ours is that we do have a voice, and that's the one thing that I think scares them, is that they don't know how many views and how much they're gonna, unless they're gonna be, be exposed.
Yeah, they're, they're playing the old, you know, first it was, you know, back in the day, would you hear that on the internet? And then morons stopped saying that because the internet, the internet is where the truth is. I'll talk to you later, man, so.
No, no, I'm listening, man. I'm, I'm. We're building blocks right now.
So, this mayor and the guy next to him, they grew up in the eighties, nineties where it was all one-way communication. They got Channel three, five, eight, and then thirteen showed up. And then it turned into cable news, and then it turned into internet, and oh my God, now everyone can be a journalist. And government parasites don't like that many eyes on them. They like to work how they have been working for decades. They, they take the taxpayer money under threat and arrest, which is exactly how they do it. Nobody voluntarily gives them anything. And then they spend millions on tires, millions on boat slips to give their buddies a place to park their boats that they got granted by the government to a failing company. Blah, 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 blah. So, I started going to the meetings too. I started talking at the meetings too. And I went to the last one where they're trying to, uh, change the decorum rules again to either restrict it to Melo County residents only. I forget what option two was. And then option three was just get rid of the free speech portion of the meeting altogether.
Or option four, temporarily suspend it, and then we'll revisit it. But what they did was basically open it up for me again in three months. In three months. And then, and it's still like, you have to understand, everybody. When you watch these videos, and the one that I'm, I'm in the works of right now, there was only one person that said no. Anytime I've seen these videos, and every time I've ever been there, what's up, delete laws? Anytime I've seen, uh, gone to these meetings, unanimous, 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 that's it. It's like, you can make a friggin' scratch record on that shit. Just chicken, chicken, unanimous, chicken, chicken, unanimous.
Yeah, if, uh, if they had a sports book for how the Clearwaters, city Clearwater is gonna vote, it's unanimous. This, this is the only one, the only decision. I've seen it every meeting I've been to where one person voted against it, and he still talked crap about us before he voted against it. And I think he only did it because he knew it was gonna pass, and so he could save face for himself. He didn't want to get a thousand emails or whatever's gonna happen. Uh, yes, Chili, we're glad you're out. I'm glad you're out. You got railroaded, bro. I hope you saw my rumble video I made right after you were arrested over there. And yeah, they did you dirty, dude. Welcome back to freedom, and I hope you bankrupt whoever it is that did these things to you. So. So, 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 right, I'm gonna, let's get the screen up here, and, uh.
Drumroll, please. This is gonna be classic.
So after all of us spoke, this, can you see my cursor? Yeah, so this, what's his name? Ben Gino, Bonino?
Uh, that's, um, Mike Manino.
Mike Manino.
And then, okay, we're gonna break down who, to people you can see. All the way to your right is Mike Manino. The guy to his left is gonna be, uh, I believe it's David Albritton. Then the guy with the red tie, that's David, that's Rector. And then the other one that you see.
Mayor Rectum.
Mayor Rectum, cuz you actually said that. And I'm not gonna ruin that when you said it, cuz I'm trying not to put that part.
She actually reacted when I said it.
And this is, uh, Lena Texera.
This is Lena Left Shoulder Texera.
Yeah, yeah, she likes to show the left shoulder cuz she's on the left side. And then, and then, and when, when you start to see the other. What's that?
I said, I really want to.
As, as this is panning, and you see other people, we'll, we'll pause, and just so that you know the, the players that are up here.
So, I wanted to tell her, during one of the comments, that I really love your left shoulder and the fact that you displayed it.
Wait, wait till you hear some of the work. I'm gonna tell you, everybody, stick around. You're gonna hear some of the things that I say. Is this my video or your video?
What do you mean? Oh, this is mine.
Okay, okay, you're gonna hear this part, and then John Felix goes, and you're gonna see the aftermath, and what I say about somebody up on here, some of y'all, if you would have seen what I'd seen. Alright, so stick around.
Here we go. This guy's about to completely lie and say, we've made videos that call for violence, and that's when we started getting salty and disrupting the meeting.
Yeah. Goddamn. Turn it up. Oh, shit.
You hear?
I can hear.
Okay. Stop right there. The whole reason they're doing this is because they don't like your viewpoint, and they find you disagreeable, and, and, and everything you just said. That's why they're doing this. What other reason would they try to get rid of the free speech portion?
Right. And, and the funny thing is, is at, like, if you haven't seen it, the, you go down a couple of videos, it's got like forty-seven thousand views on it right now. It's only been like a day or two. I, I started out this meeting, and I was like, I agree with you adding more money to make sure Pure Sixty is there for me to open carry. So I can make sure I can open carry my friggin', my AR and shit, and, uh, and you, and then he even chimed in after that. He was like, well, oh, Mr. Taylor came in suit and tie, and he's, everything's gonna go good today. That's what he thought.
People are saying they can't hear this, so let me play a little bit. Guys, please tell me if you can hear this.
Go to, um, hold on.
So you guys can hear that okay now? Let me know, please.
Push one in the chat if it's good. Push two in the chat if you can't.
Sounds muffled. I can't do nothing about the muffling.
Go, go straight to their website, man.
I know, but that's gonna take me like two, three minutes. Yeah, alright, here we go.
Let me be clear. Then this council, it's not interested in silencing speakers, whether you're from here or not. Simply that you offer a disfavored viewpoint or are critical of the city of Clearwater, right from my ten officials.
Can you hear it okay? Yak?
I, I heard it. You know, thi- this is gaslighting at its finest, man.
Saying they can't.
Alright, um, the only thing I can say is go straight to their website.
Alright.
Because that's the only way, and maybe that will change it. I don't know.
You're talking about Facebook, right?
No, uh, YouTube.
Yeah, but they're, they cut it off when I get, they cut it off.
I know, and after they cut it off, I, then you can come up with my video I say.
Okay, so go to their YouTube channel?
Yeah, you can go to their YouTube channel, and when it goes to recess, I'm already recording all the shit going down.
It's like Clearwater.
Council.
Council. Meeting. Okay, see what we got here. Seven. See if we can get up to where I get booted. There's you. There's this idiot. There he goes. Oh, maybe not. Uh, let's see here. You talking. Haluba.
Yeah, Haluba's great too. That's my dog.
Talk to the people, man. Well, I finally.
So guess what? Guess what, everybody? I'm working on this video as well. What you're gonna witness is some of the stuff, but you're also gonna see a lot of the insides, and that's what, you know, when you look at these council meetings, you don't get to see the council themselves, and that's why what you're looking at with John, you know, obviously, the audio probably get better when he publishes this. But it's to actually see their facial, to see them squirm. That's where they, cuz, you know, the second they, they put it on the, and did you know, well, after I, I, you know, I'm driving four hours, they wouldn't show any of the people speaking. Nobody that, nobody that spoke after we both got ki- kicked out, nobody else's faces got shown for the rest of the meeting.
You talking about the council members?
No, the friggin' Pete, the, during public comment. Like, we were only, that wasn't even public comment. That was just an agenda item. There was a whole nother section for you to speak. That's why we were trying, we were trying to get you to calm down so that you don't speak twice.
I know.
And even, eh, but then, after you got kicked out, fucking that guy Manino on the right, he fucking started talking more shit, and when he started talking more shit, I was like, he started doing it, and then the mayor started doing it. And I was like, fuck this, dude. I'm not gonna let you gaslight me.
I'm cussing. Oh, yeah, you're right.
These guys were friggin' idiots, dude. They, like, dude, this is bad. Like, when you're about to witness, uh, it's really a true crime.
Alright, so this is a guy, uh, right before me who said that their attempts to restrict the free speech portion of the council meeting isn't restricting free speech. And then. Let me know how this audio is, please.
May this meeting, clearly, the Clearwater, metal meeting.
We'll do them in a different video, but basically, he said they can do what they want in the meeting, and it doesn't restrict people's rights. Here we go.
Alright, I'll, uh, look for the conversation. Um, first, let me acknowledge, and I recognize the essence of a free society is one.
Quickly pause real quick. I want you to notice, everybody, notice where his eyes are. And this isn't, this guy speaking from the heart. It's not him speaking his mind. He's looking down at a piece of paper. And you can continue.
To have the ability to use their voice, including being critical of the government and us as a council. There's a bedrock principle underlying the First Amendment. It's that a government may not prohibit the expression of an idea or discriminate against speech based on its content, its viewpoint, or simply find the expression disagreeable. Let me be clear. That this council is not interested in silencing speakers, whether you're from here or not, simply because you offer a disfavored viewpoint or are critical of the city of Clearwater or your elected officials.
I'll get it.
We've unfortunately, as a city, been forced to face challenges associated with identifying and protecting the boundary where free speech becomes excessively disruptive and to safeguard the rights of our residents to participate in the political and civic process.
Who's stopping anyone from, for participating? What, what, the narrative they're trying to push is people are intimidated by cameras. Wah, wah, wah. We all know that. You take a camera anywhere, and everyone loses their mind. That's a moot point. That's, again, that's First Amendment protected activity. If it makes you uncomfortable, move to a place where they restrict media, everywhere else in the world. Move to Saudi Arabia where they chop women's heads off in the street, and they won't allow media in the country.
Um, and the same thing is like, hey, they just don't like it. If it's not for them, they friggin' hate it.
They hate all these eyes on them. They hate the fact that anyone can be media now. That's what they hate the most, that anyone can be media, and they don't have a monopoly on the narrative.
And you monetize it.
Oh, yeah, that's another.
They're gonna get to that. Don't worry. They're gonna get to that.
Yeah, let's go.
Free from intimidation and harassment. Sadly, I think we all would agree that sadly, the escalation of disruptive and obstructive behavior has created an atmosphere of hostility within this city hall.
So again, when your hostile police department puts their hands on an innocent person and then assaults them in the, again, they keep pretending like that never happened, and should just be putting into the memorial, no MF'er. You're the violent ones. You're the violent ones. You're the harassers. It's you. We wouldn't be here if you didn't commit violence. Everything they say is backwards.
Okay, thi- this is, this is just the beginning of the gaslighting.
I know.
This is just the beginning, everybody. Just, that's why we're saying, thi- there is, this, this video that I'm gonna put out too is gonna be long.
You'll see my, when he starts talking here, in my video, I start squishing his head with my hands.
Where many of our residents are fearful to attend and to participate in their local government. Outside of these walls is what many of you are not seeing, are not reading, and are not hearing. Our staff, your city council, has continually been threatened with harm, rape, and even death.
So from the crowd there, I said, just like me.
As online videos continue to incite violence.
Lie. That's a lie. Please email this guy, Benino, in Clearwater, and ask him politely. Sir, you mentioned there's videos that like to incite violence and whatever he's about to say. Could you please give me the link to those so I can look into it for myself?
They, they, I sent them to your, uh, your, uh, thing, but if you go to my video and look at any Clearwater thing, all their friggin' emails are in the description. The emails are in my descriptions on any, and just about every video that you'll see recent has friggin' their e- all their emails and phone number in it.
So email Benino here and ask him to please give you the link to the videos that were, are inciting violence.
And urge followers to act hostile to.
That's a lie. That's another buzzword the police and government parasites like to use is hostile, when in fact, they're the hostile ones who use gunmen to enforce their political arbitrary, arbitrary rules.
The conventional moral standards.
So we are saying that's a lie. There was three of us that said that's a lie, but he's, he's got a hard on for me right here.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, this is the last time. You're at you. You're out. You're out of the room.
You see left shoulder to hair. Ah!
I'm scared. I'm so scared.
I can't believe he said that he didn't say anything.
They caught my heart. This is your last. Okay, well, it's your last warning, though.
And we're all sitting there trying to tell you to shut up, dude. We were sitting there trying to like, chill the bug out, chill out.
I couldn't.
And I get it, dude, cuz I did the same thing right after you.
I don't know if you guys heard me, uh, just then I told him, this is your last warning, and then I tell him again when he says it, and he loses his mind. By the way, look at this. This looks like a sail on one of those yachts. I was telling Solo Yakker, well, this knows he could snort an eight ball and a nine ball. Alright, let's go.
Don't disrupt me.
Cuz I got a gavel now.
I forgot, I forgot to bring my gavel, dude.
I have a gavel, dude. I have, I have one. I made a mini gavel.
I'm gonna bring, the next time I go there and he interrupts, dude, I'm grabbing, I'm gonna be like, stop it.
When I, I'm gonna recess for five minutes.
Five minutes.
Now he looks over at, uh, Jared, Sergeant Jared Stiff, I think that's his name. And he basically give him the nod, go ahead and get Felix out of here.
Yeah. He's like, yeah.
Now I gotta go to your video here. Let's go back to, uh, uh, these sexy guys right here, and then I'll do this. And then I'll sure, stop that screen.
What you're about to see is what you don't see when this shit happens. That's why it's important to record, 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 record. Expose this shit, man.
Exposed, exposed. Okay, hold on, yeah. Uh, I gotta find that again. Alright, this might sound a little muffled, but but share a screen. No, sir, yes, is it clear? Did you get a cast or says? Right here, okay. Okay, so. This is what happened from Solo Yakker's angle. Hopefully, the audio's okay.
You interrupted me too.
So you can interrupt anybody you want at any point in time. Nobody else can say anything.
And Sergeant Stiff's a piece of shit, dude.
Oh, yeah, this, this.
He makes a hundred and ten thousand dollars to sit in a fucking council meeting for fucking four hours just to make fifty dollars.
I bet you, I bet you he, uh, uh, drinks about twelve to fifteen a night.
Hundred and ten thousand dollars a year to be a pig. Tyrant pig. Hundred and ten K a year to be a tyrant pig.
I just gave him the, the, the National Socialist Party of Germany salute.
Look at you. You need to change these uniforms to brown.
I'm moving.
So I haven't seen what happened here.
So did the mayor. The mayor gets away with it without any, without any punishment, with nothing. It's okay for a board member to do it, but it's not okay for a.
I'm trying, I'm trying my best just to get kicked out, everybody. At this point, that's why I'm like, you know, don't look at me. I didn't do it. And so, and, you know, in Eyes on the State, everybody, we're, we're in recess, so we have, we have freedom of speech. But the one thing about this is that they already have, they, for some reason, and we talked about this, that I, I have video, there, there's video of, is when the, the mayor says that he tried to say that I, I called him or we talked, and I, I friggin' tried to throw Felix under the bus, and he tried to do that on live stream. He did that on live stream.
No, it wasn't, cuz we just played the live stream.
No, 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 no.
Oh, it was on their live stream?
It wasn't on this. It wasn't when we were, it was literally on live stream.
Oh, really? Alright.
Yeah, yeah.
And we are all out here quiet. Nobody says anything. I mean, come on. I mean, for real, for real. Uh, we are too. This is why we're here.
Subscribe to Eyes on the State. He's always out there. He's always vocal. He always does awesome.
The whole reason I never came to a council meeting is cuz you asked. With no questions.
And let you know, everybody, there's ten cop, there's ten cops here today.
Oh, and they set up a metal detector. And they set up a metal detector especially for that day.
Yep.
Millions and millions of dollars. No questions.
They love their little barricades too. So lame. And then the ba- last week, the last meeting, we went to the back where they get on their short bus and leave. And this time we went back there and they put up like these little tikes, plastic barricades on the driveway. They don't get it, dude. Why can't they just pull up a chair or ask for our phone number or say, what can we do to put this in the past? They're not interested in that because it involves accountability for their crimes.
Facts.
What?
Facts.
Why would we go and run away and hide?
This is funny right here. That's for you, John, right there. Oh, that gets better. It's the end of the world as we know it.
It's the end of the world as we know it. It's the end of the world as we know it and Yakker feels fine.
It's the end of the world as we know it. It's the end. Back it up replay.
We need to, uh, tell, uh, Butterface City, uh, manager. That I'm sure she's gonna do the breast job she can.
Yeah, dude, I think she got a breast job anyway.
What'd I miss?
As we know it. Listen. It's the end.
You talking about Butterface there?
Yeah, I knew about the Butterface, man, but from the.
Is that what you're talking about?
Shit, that was, that was that conversation that we had about the friggin, the paper bag with the holes poked out. You throw that bag on almost any girl that looks that stacked like that.
Dude, they make, they make these masks now that have like Kanye's face on it or whoever you want. And you put it on, and it blacks out the rest of you.
Yeah.
She needs, she needs one of those. What?
I had to buy. I'll buy that for a dollar.
I would buy fifty cents. It'll help pay for the thunder that she doesn't with.
Oh, that's right. Alright, hey, who's down for pizza and beer after this? I'm in.
Pizza and beer? Oh, yeah.
Does that, does this guy have a pizza placement?
He, he has like three, three restaurants or something down on fucking Cleveland Street. It's just, we never go to his. We always go to downtown pizza, which.
I wanna, I wanna go to his next time because he was nice enough to do an interview with me and, uh, and he, and he. I think he learned a few things, so.
I mean, come on, this is a joke, you guys. It's a joke. You guys are a joke. Rubber stamp everything. In the last six meetings, there hasn't been one nay or one discussion with anybody for any business to come up.
And that's it. I, I friggin, I like, cuz at that point I was going out to see, see you. And, um, that's when I saw you doing the interview cuz I was just worried that they were, you know, cuffing you up or some bullshit. They were pushing you out. And, you know, I gotta, I gotta try to friggin, if you, if you go, I go, we're monkeys, you know what I mean?
Where? Oh, in jail?
Yeah.
We're gonna be cellies. Cellies is the new term, bro, for.
Dude, you know how it is, man. I'm old school.
My man, I know.
Five years old, bro. I ain't fucking young. I don't know the new lingo.
My wife and I, the only reason I know is cuz my wife and I are watching the Netflix thing called Unlocked. Where they have all these, all these criminals in this one pod at the jail. And they're twenty-three hour lockdown and one hour.
Out, yeah.
Out in the pod. Well, the sheriff there is like, we're gonna try and experiment. We're gonna unlock all the doors and you guys are gonna rule yourselves and even the guards are gonna be on the other side of the doors on there. It's been awesome to watch, bro.
Crazy shit?
It's pretty good. Well, they have to, they have to, it's like a reality show. They have to manage themselves, except it's a real jail with real inmates, real murderers and real.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's what I'm saying, dude. You need to send me a link to that. Shit.
I will. It's called Unlocked, but yeah. Um, so. This is where we're at. So now the thing is, they still can't stop you from speaking on agenda items. And dude, you shouldn't have to drive four hours for this. So I think I'm gonna start attending these meetings. And maybe kinda take your place or, you know, fill the spot till the BS restrictions are up and then we can go back again, but. We got, they gotta know that this isn't a game. We don't think this shit's funny. Free speech is free speech. The Second Amendment's the Second Amendment and the Constitution's the Constitution. If you don't wanna follow that. Take your costumes off. Stop being, uh, uh, sworn in member of government and, and go live your life, dude.
Uh, you know, and that's, and that's what I try, I think I said, it's like in my last video that didn't get any views, but I'm like. This is, it's no different. We all, you stuck yourself on YouTube and then you got to where you got in. Just like you, there are people that loved you. There's people that didn't like you.
Oh, there's plenty.
And, and the same thing with me. I mean, I, I.
We get way more threats than these council members get.
Oh, dude, we're way more pressed than fucking Tampa Bay Times.
We get more views than they get. We get more subs than the Tan- they're a paper tiger. Their del- their delusion they've been trying to hoist upon the American people is disintegrating. The internet is a wrecking ball to your BS tyranny and your perception of what real life is. You're living in an upside down dream world and we're gonna let you know.
You know, and even for me, like, uh, if, if you don't know, go to, if you type in Tampa Bay Times, uh. I'm sure if you just type in Tampa Bay Times, Clearwater or Tampa Bay Times, Michael Taylor or something, they've got a new article. I'm doing.
And Bay News Nine.
Actually.
And Bay News Nine, if you type in Bay News Nine, Clearwater or Bay News Nine, John Felix or Bay News Nine, uh, the Arm Fisherman. You're gonna find them articles. I was also on, uh, TV on a loop. My buddy, uh, came in from the Philippines. He was watching the news by, by cha- by chance that night and he's like, holy crap, there's John.
Yeah, and, and like I said, even when I got, even when I kicked myself out cuz I did, I, I did it on purpose. Um, you know, the, the, that news media group, I looked at, uh, I'm, I was looking at the camera guy like, hey, man. Like shit's about to go down right now, dude. And I was saying, and as you saw, I was just kinda standing there for a second. I'm like. And I'm just listening to their friggin garb, their friggin garble and I'm like. I can't take it no more. Like, you're not gonna gaslight me.
But it was still the same Benino guy reading off a script, right?
Yep, yep.
Oh, oh, the monetization thing. This, we're not here so someone can make money on their channel. So. Now, this is where I get so mad because they would never say that about, uh, Tampa Bay Times or Bay News Nine. They're in there for clicks. They're literally there for clicks and views. They're not activists at all. They're only there for clicks and views.
Oh, those people get paid through a news organization. What? I get paid through my news organization. What are you talking about? I'm like, and I, I keep telling them, I'm like, this is my job.
They don't understand. They cannot wrap their mind around that if you don't have a giant mil- multimillion dollar conglomerate company. That you can't be media. They cannot wrap their small little mind around that.
Wait till you see the, the parts that I do.
What we're doing right this second is media. Otherwise, who would know who I am if I wasn't media? I love when people say you're not media. Then how do you know who I am?
Yeah.
Live in Nebraska.
How, how did, how did, like, I had never spoken your name ever at a council meeting, nothing. You just showed up a couple times. And so they started figuring it out. And then I started posting all these other videos saying, hey, don't forget everybody, October nineteenth starts at what time?
Uh, ten AM.
Ten AM. Until we run out of food.
October nineteenth, Pensacola, Florida, hundred dollars a ticket, all you can eat, all you can drink, all you could smoke, bring your own butts. And cigarettes and, uh, cooking competition between me and two other scrubs. I'm just kidding. Me and, uh. Solo, solo. And Rice Krispie are gonna have a cooking competition, uh, probably live music, maybe some comedy, some speeches. Lackluster is gonna be there. I believe Long Island Audit's gonna be there. A lot of good auditors are gonna be there. If you wanna meet them, email me johnfelix@gmail.com. And please give me your first, last name and phone number so I can call you directly cuz we're gonna make sure there's no haters or anything to mess up our event.
This is a no nonsense party. If you come there trying to bring some drama for your.
No drama.
Uh, it, it's not gonna last long.
It's drama free. It will be quashed so fast you wouldn't, you're gonna wonder how you couldn't complete your sentence.
Yep.
So, that's that. Thanks, everybody for joining us. Final thoughts, Yak?
For everybody out there, this is not just about Clearwater. This is about looking, you don't have to go to these meetings, but. If whatever local government that you are in, hey, what's up, Gary? Hey, Gary. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. I'll call you after the stream, brother. But for anybody else.
Redhead chasing Gary. Go ahead.
But anybody out there, look, just, just go to your local government, go to their website. There's usually an agenda. And start looking at it. Look at it. See the amount of money that they spend. And then, and if there's something, it could be just one item or it could be no items or you just, you know. Friggin the cops were sitting out in front of your house for no apparent reason. Like, I, I don't appreciate these cops sitting out in front of my house. Say, if there's something you have to say. They're supposed to listen, but half the time, guess what? They don't. They don't listen to us.
That's true. Gary is asking if it's gonna be, uh, you know, Gary, it's gonna be a couple hundred people there and I'm gonna have to hire security and everything. So I'm gonna ask you guys to leave your, your pieces in your car.
Yeah, that's easy enough.
It's a private event, man.
Yeah, it's all private, man.
I mean. The, uh. One of the guys is strongly affiliated affiliated with the UFC fighters and, uh, they're basically gonna be security, so.
Yeah, we're, this is gonna be, I, I can't say it won't be an issue unless there's somebody a hundred and fifty yards away and, you know, they happen to shoot Taylor's ear off.
Right.
But, uh, I think we're gonna be good.
Dan Nicole is asking about concealed carry, you know. I'd rather there was no guns there, not because I'm anti-gun, but I don't want anything bad to happen at my event. I wanted to go on year after year and the last, you know how happy everybody would be if there was a shooting at our event? That would. That would make all the trolls.
It would ruin it forever. And, and just everybody, like, just to let you know, we had the friggin, oh, the, the friggin thing that we did in Titusville. Where everybody came out and spoke. We had, I, I don't think you were there, John, but I, I did another one of these meet and greets. And we had a barbecue.
I went to one of them.
Uh, you know, Gary was there. We had a, we had a, a good event. It was like fifteen, twenty people. Um, no police interaction, sat there, had a friggin barbecue, Rice Krispies was there, uh, good time. But we had, we did have guns, but it was an open carry event. This is not. See, that's the difference.
You're not gonna need your gun, dude. You're not gonna need your gun that day.
That, that's what I'm saying. This is different. This is not an open carry event. If it was an open carry event. Yeah, bring all your guns, bring, bring your fifty cal, all you want, but this is a private event.
We're gonna have snipers everywhere, so.
And we have, we have, they're just, trust me, everybody, from the talks I've had with John Felix. There's plenty of security there. And if anything, if anybody tries to step out of line. Or gets a little too friggin tipsy, they're gonna get sent back to their cars, say, park out on the side of the road.
Day of solidarity. It's a day of solidarity. I wanna meet these auditors. The fans wanna meet the auditors.
Yep.
I wanna meet the ones I haven't met. We're gonna have fun. We're gonna talk about ideas and things and we're gonna. Get different points of view and we're gonna create lots of content and it's gonna be fun. It's one day. We can get through one day without any problems.
Yeah.
So, email me.
Yeah, and you gotta call, you gotta get johnfelix@gmail.com, johnfelix@gmail.
Filex.
Whatever.
If you're hooked on phonics.
I'm hooked on chronic.
Hooked on chronic. Alright, man. I'm gonna call you in a minute.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for coming on. Thanks for.
I appreciate you, man.
Bless you. See you. Alright, everybody, uh, yeah, thank you so much. I can't thank you guys enough. Please consider joining the channel. It's one dollar a month. I just uploaded. This, my whole video. It's an hour and a half long with the interviews, with the reporters. Where I even went up to the fire chief and explained to him right in front of a cop why we respect the firefighters and why we don't respect the police. And, uh, yeah, so. Yeah, also I got a Etsy, I have an Etsy store with some beautiful t-shirts, pool cues, rings. I make rings out of coins. They're unbelievable. This is a continental currency. Has the thirteen colonies on the outside. Probably can't see it cuz of the thing. Thirteen cop. Thirteen. Thank you, everybody. Oh, plea, oh, yeah, Rumble too. I hate to just promote and promote, promote cuz it annoys me when other channels do it, but I'm sorry, man. It, it has to be done. Find me on Rumble. Please subscribe to me on Rumble. I can be myself on Rumble. Go watch my last episode on Rumble with the OG Patriot. We're on almost every Tuesday at eight PM. And you can be ourselves and we could talk like we were talking in person. We don't have to constantly filter everything for, for red tube over here. So. Oh, thanks so much, Angry Vet. That's really nice of you, man. That's really, really nice of you, man. Um, yeah, that's it, everybody. Thanks for coming. Thanks, Solo Yakker. Uh, Mayor Rectum, you're not gonna dissuade us. You, you know, you're gonna take a three month break. We'll still be there to make comments during, uh, your agenda items. And believe me, I'm creative enough to figure out how to get under your skin. Okay, or you can have a sit down and have a conversation and we figure out how to move forward. It's your choice, buddy. Everybody, Angry Vet, man, that's really nice of you and I hope to see you at Autopalooza and I hope to see everybody at Autopalooza. There's about sixty, fifty-five tickets left. Something like that. Some people haven't paid, so you might get lucky and get one. And yes, please subscribe to the Angry Vet. He's donated like forty, uh, memberships to my channel now. Bless you, bro. That's very nice of you. Okay, everyone. Peace and tranquility. Love you long time. Now I gotta cut grass in a hundred degree weather. Good thing I took a shower today just so I could sweat and take another shower so I could sweat and take another shower and live this repetitive life of mine. Someone asked me how my life was going the other day. I'm like, it's taken forever. Everyone, I love you. Have a good day.